Student and school presentations, parent groups, open to the public, three minutes per speaker for no longer than sixty minutes. Superintendent's report, correspondence and board comments, including committee reports. We'll have a personnel agenda, consent agenda. We will not be using a second executive session and we'll then motion to adjourn the meeting. I do want to point out a couple of corrections on the personnel agenda, page two, item F. Under secondary guidance counselors, the name Beth Catalano should be added to the agenda. And that was the only correction. Okay. May I have a motion for previous minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes of the previous regular meeting held on Monday, February 23rd, 2015 is circulated.
Second, comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do we have any students or school presentations tonight? Any parent groups? Okay, before we begin, open to the public, I need to get the book. A notebook?
Yeah.
(inaudible)
Christine, could you read?
Actually, yeah, it's in...
Okay.
The Board of Education has established a single period for public comment at board meetings, not to exceed sixty minutes. Speakers may generally comment upon any matter relating to district business. The president and/or the superintendent may respond to certain of the comments when all of the speakers have finished. The rules applicable to such public comment are set forth in Board Policy 1230, a copy of which is available in the signed up book at the front of this room and on the district's website. Thank you.
So to begin our public comment, Mr. Pavlov, would you like to speak?
Yes, I will. Dennis Pavlov, Beacon resident. I was, I'll start in my comments with, in reverse order. I was here a while back, I think it was last year. Some former alumni student of Beacon High School was here and he said they're, I don't know if they were forming a committee for the old Beacon High School turning a hundred years old this year. Has anybody heard anything regarding that? And I, that's what I heard, I remember there was a student here from 1971, I forgot his name, and he was talking about an anniversary for the old Beacon High School turning a hundred this year. I want to know if the Board has heard anything about that, in regards to that? Or, so let me finish it with my comments. So I'm here tonight to say that, I don't know, you know, I believe we all have this trait. We know when we're being lied to, and we know when someone is really honest with us. I just happen to have it a little bit more, and I'm not saying I come to every meeting and I'm trying to read somebody new, or somebody that's just start now, or where you're feeling, I want to try to see where your heart is, first of all, if it's true, or where your head is, you know, as well. I'm trying to, so I'm trying to decipher the two. And I've been coming here for so long, I think I'm a pretty good judge of character when I say that. And it's not about me tonight, so I'm just trying to say, I didn't want to say that, because I wanted to say that, but it's not about me tonight. I'd like to just to say that. Like I said, I'm able to know someone whether he or she is true blue or as phony as an old shoe. Because when I attend these meetings, I'm only looking for two areas of concern for me, is responsibility and accountability. I don't believe every person can learn responsibility and accountability if he or she doesn't know right from wrong. And if this person wants to do it all, and control every situation, and believes it's all about me, not about me, the person I'm referring to is a superintendent, a superintendent, not the superintendent. I witnessed firsthand that this person applies herself to the needs, now I'm talking about the superintendent. I witnessed firsthand that this person applies herself to the needs of the position, assesses the situation well, makes herself available when necessary to the public and to her people she works with, as well. So in my best judgment, I am very grateful for the gratitude to know her, and I'll coin another phrase tonight, which turns, which turns to glatitude, that we have a superintendent that acts instead of react to the people in the district. So, like I said, you know, I've been coming to meetings for quite a while, not just school board meetings, city council, planning board, a lot of meetings, and I can pretty much tell when, where your head is in the right area. The only thing is, I have a, a little bit of a dilemma, is after 2018, I hope we don't put another search out. I was talking to one of the former superintendents here's assistants, that might want to come back, but if you want to, if you want to find out who that is, come and talk to me. Thank you folks, have a good night.
Thank you. Mrs. Kelly?
I would like to remind the district, the board here, that non-public schools, non-public school students are entitled to some publicly funded services, which are either provided by the school district in which the student resides, or the district in which the non-public school is located. State-funded programs and services include health services, textbook loan program, computer loan software program, school library material loan program, transportation, special education, dual enrollment program, and mandated service reimbursement. NCLC, which is New Covenant Learning Center, has requested services on several occasions over the years to no avail. Moving forward, I would like to know what could be done to fulfill the obligations to the non-public schools here in Beacon. Thank you.
All right. I'm not sure what the next name is, what does that look like to you? Norcas or Norvis? Okay. Could you pronounce your last name for us?
Hi, my name is Kaisha Norcas.
Norcas.
Okay. Thank you. I'm also here concerning the non-public schools. I know the school that I work for, we've put in several requests, haven't heard any responses in writing, in emails, speaking with people, specifically about the computer system for the Read Live program. We were trained on laptops, right here, in the Beacon City School District, at the elementary school. When we received our computers, we received old, out-of-date, standing computers. And my suggestion, I'm here to suggest that, since we've got the inappropriate computers, if we could at least have the hand-me-downs from the elementary school, their laptops, and then the public school could be furnished with brand-new laptops, and we could take their hand-me-downs. Because I just feel, it's, I don't want anyone to think that we're asking for a lot, that we're asking for too much, it's a small school, it would be extremely inexpensive to give us the appropriate equipment, the appropriate technology. But if that, that seems to be too difficult, we would take the old elementary school software and they can get new software, is my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stark?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Jan Stark, resident. I have a question before I read this, and you can answer or not. I wasn't aware as a taxpayer that the school district is responsible to give private schools or schools that are not part of our school district, any type of equipment, whether it be computers or whatever. I feel as a taxpayer, if we can, you know, if we are able to do that, that's great, but I don't believe that that's something that we should be required to do. I'm not sure if we are. Moving on, now that we have a permanent superintendent, it is my hope that we are able to move on in a positive academic direction as we start to formulate the 2015-16 budget. I have stated in the past, so Bill, please don't roll your eyes, how we are out of compliance in the middle school as it relates to technology education and family consumer science. Not all the kids get it, and they don't get, and they don't all get the appropriate amount of time. At the high school, we have no technology and engineering class, class electives to offer our students. That program disappeared when Dr. Norvsky was here, when the teacher retired, and she stated that, well, we're not cutting any programs, but by not filling that teaching position, we have in fact eliminated that program. Courses such as Principles of Engineering, World of Technology, Architecture, Design and Drawing for Production, Energy, Electronics, or even Engineering by Design, a program that spans grades K through 12, with a pre-test, post-test that are approved by our state education department for our SLOWs and APPR, would be a wonderful way to go. Also, because of the way to correct them and test for design for engineering by design, students tend to do better on ELA, math, and science standardized tests, and there is data to back that up. That would also be a program that would be very effective and extremely helpful for our special education students who don't tend to get those type of programs now. And this is without having to, by having a program here in district, we are not looking to source, outsource our students to BOSIs at $10,000 a student approximate cost, and then if a student says, well, I don't want to go, and quits, we can't refill that position with another student. By not having this type of STEM course material, families looking, look to Wapengers and Arlington when they are, when they're looking to possibly locate to this area of the state. Colleges also look at the overall programs of a high school to see what type of course offers a prospective student was exposed to. So, by not having engineering, technology and engineering courses taught by certified technology education teachers, we are really short-handing our students. It's also my feeling, you know, at least while I was here at the high school, that we have a very limited amount of courses, elective courses, for our students to take. I also know that, I have spoken with several parents who have the option that are teachers or educators, that when their children get to the high school age, that they're going to be looking to take them to districts where they teach because of the academic programs that are offered to them, which means a further loss of strong academic students. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I have two announcements tonight from the Public Relations Committee and the BTA. On April 26th, from nine to 12 o'clock, at the Knights of Columbus, the BTA will sponsor a free pancake breakfast for senior citizens. All others will pay $5, and the proceeds will benefit the BTA Scholarship Fund for our students, in which we give scholarships to our seniors at the end of the year. So we invite everyone to join us. Secondly, on July 22nd, the Hudson Valley Renegades will host an educator of the night, night, in which the BTA Public Relations Committee will be choosing, along with our cabinet members, an educator of the night from the BTA, who will then throw out the first pitch that night. $3 from every package sale will benefit the BTA Scholarship Fund, and we will have flyers that we can disseminate to everyone at some point as we get closer, and they will also be posted on our BTA website as well. So we just wanted to make those announcements to everyone, so we hope you can come out and support the cause. Thank you.
Can you repeat the date of the pancake breakfast?
Sure. That's April 26th, from nine to 12.
Thank you. Okay. Do you want to repeat that?
Sure. Madam President, can I just say another quick comment, real quick?
Sure, real quick.
I forgot to mention these questions. I'm so used to hearing bells at these meetings all the time, I don't know what bell I listen to anymore. Okay, I have a question about the moving the special ed students. What was the reason we had to move our special ed students, bus to various schools out of the district? Three-part question. Who approved this, who approved this to happen? Second part? Third part? What was the district's role in this, i.e., was it funding from the government, or whatever else was the case maybe on that? What was the, why we were moving students out of the district, special ed students? Thank you.
I just want to be sure I understand your question. You're asking, why didn't we move them out?
To various schools in the area, out of the district, to bust out of the district.
Programs, I think he's talking about. Okay. Okay. Other district program.
Well, I'm going to start at the beginning, with a hundred-year-old celebration of the old high school. And I've, I've actually lost track of that person, but I know Kelly, we put, we put a picture on one of the...
In the newsletter.
In the newsletter, to remind people about it. So that, that's the one thing that we did do. So I want to talk a little bit about technology and the questions that have been raised this evening. First, I want to say that I think that we have a good working relationship. I guess we'll have to ask Priscilla, but we enjoy meeting with her, and I've had the pleasure of working with her, I think, each time that I've been here. And so I welcome any continual feedback and questions that we have. And I have some information this evening, and people may have different information, and if you do, we welcome listening to it. This information comes from the state ed department, and it actually comes out of information on budgeting, and it's about technology. And what it does say is that there is a base rate, a per-student base rate for technology from public to non-public schools. That is $24 and a few cents, I'm going to say 24. And then you multiply that by your building aid ratio. And so when we multiplied the 24 by our current state building aid ratio, that's $15 and change for each student that is a Beacon student. So that's one piece of information that I did find. I believe last time, the grant, the grant, the Smart Schools Grant came up. The Smart Schools Grant, everybody, all the districts are waiting for sight of, sight of the money and sight of the guidelines. There is information in that grant right now that does talk about sharing a certain per-pupil allocation out of that money. But they have not given guidelines, and we don't have the money, we're all waiting, waiting, waiting for that. So I think that there's more to come about that. The computers, actually, when we meet in that room right there, that's a computer lab for the library, and the computers that were sent to the school were exactly the same model that's in the room that we're using right there in our high school library. So they may appear to be obsolete because everybody today seems to have an iPad, or a, you know, a smaller mobile, more mobile computer. But those are computers that we're still using, and the computers that we gave came out of the Forrester lab a week prior, so they were up to use in our district until a week prior that we gave them away. So that's what I know, and if, if people have different information about what public schools owe in terms of technology equipment, then I would be glad to receive that at the office, and you can send it to Kelly, or you can email, there's an email address that Kelly would receive, that she would give it to me. Or you can set up a meeting, I'd be glad to meet. And Mr. Stark talked about Engineering by Design, and that is a program that we have talked about, and that we are talking about, is a program that I would like to see us explore more and pilot in the coming year, and he's been very helpful in sharing resources with us about that particular program. In terms of moving special ed students or programs, actually, we have, we've done more movement back to the district than we have away from the district, but we do service some of our students outside of the district, because their needs can best be met by another organization. So for example, when Nicole was up speaking and she had the slide up, we have at least one student that is in a residential placement, which means that their care, their needs are very high, and they get care around the clock at a residential setting. We have some students that are out of district private, and we do have some students who are best served in the BOSIs program. However, the vast majority of our students are served within, within the school district. And I think Mr. Mulhern was really instrumental in bringing back programs, as he explained this evening. And now I'm just going to move into my report. Okay. Unless you have something to say? Yep. In my report this evening, I had planned to share some information about race and ethnicity. And I have been in contact with the EEOC office, and they have advised me that that information from that report, the EEOC 5 report, is confidential, and is for government people and other government-related agencies. So the report that I had put together, I have been told, is confidential. So what I prepared for the gentleman who asked about it is a contact person at the EEOC office, and the rules that I am reading and that I was given from the EEOC office. So again, if, if there's something that we hear differently, I'd be glad to share the report, but right now, that was the advisement to me. I'd also like to share information about some very exciting events. Tomorrow's our conference day. I want to thank Mrs. Kellogg, who has worked tirelessly with her staff to provide a fabulous conference day for tomorrow. We're very excited about it, and the teachers have had a multitude of requests, a multitude of courses that they could choose for tomorrow. And we have a national speaker here, Stephanie Harvey, who has a literacy background, and she used to be author of a very popular book called Strategies That Work. So we're excited to have her and our other presenters, some write from our own staff and other local presenters as well. Tomorrow evening is our first parent academy night, and it's a parent portal night for the middle school and high school. Letters have gone out to the homes. Some people have received them Friday, some received them Saturday, some have received today. But what I can say is that already, the directions are given, and if, if you feel familiar with a computer, you're, most people are able to just read the directions and go in and get on the parent portal. So from the high school today, we have 48 parents, and from the middle school, 78 parents got on the parent portal today, so we had 126, just from the new letters, and that's very exciting for us. But if you'd like some extra help, a little bit of guidance in logging in, please come to the parent portal night for middle school and high school tomorrow night at seven o'clock. And also tomorrow night, very busy day, we have music in our schools that has been rescheduled twice now because of snow, and so the music in the schools program will be in the theater, and our program, the parent portal program, will be in the lab. It's not a long program, once you log on, that's, that's it, there will be a loop, a film loop going, if you'd like to watch that, and then maybe you can also catch some of the concert as well. So a big night out. March 16th at seven o'clock, right here in this room, we are having the action team report out, and those are the four action teams that were a follow-up to the dropout forum, and they are going to be sharing information about the work that they have completed so far. So if you're interested in that, it's right here in this room at seven o'clock. Is that the music in their school night? That's the music in our school night. That's, that's the night we're going to be competing with music in our schools, March 16th. Thank you. March 18th is another parent academy night, this is designed for high school and middle school parents, and actually, Mr. Mulhern mentioned this evening about transitions for special education students, there will be a presentation. There are a number of presentations that night that people, parents can choose from, and we will offer them twice, they're one-hour sessions, so that they can go to their favorite one, and then if there's another favorite one, they'll be able to see that as well. March 19th is the Air Force Concert, and I believe that is a brass band, and I believe they play some jazz music. So come and find out, that's at seven o'clock, right here at the theater. It's free, but you need to get your ticket ahead of time. There are tickets, Kelly, where are, where are our tickets?
I have some with me right now, and we have them at the district office, and we have them at the high school, and they'll have them there. They're going to have them perform.
Excellent. So if you want to get them ahead, district office, or the, the high school, or get them at the door. March 25th is our third parent academy evening, and that is a night for athletics. Mr. Nemeczek is going to be here for that particular night, as well as, we're hoping some coaches and some information. The first half of the evening, the first hour, that, that presentation starts at 6:30, as does the high school, middle school parent academy, that also starts at 6:30. 6:30 to 7:30, we'll be addressing athletics for the middle school, and 7:30 to 8:30, we'll address athletics for the high school. And many thanks to Ms. Attwell, who has been our parent communicator, who has worked to set up these evenings, and we're very excited for the, the people that you've put together. We also were in contact today with the people who run Carly's Crusade. That will be another parent evening coming soon, we will be meeting with him this, this week or next, and we'll be setting up an evening, and an evening for parents, as well as some assemblies for our students, so that's very exciting as well. So if you want to get them ahead, district office or the high school, or get them at the door. March 25th is our third parent academy evening, and that is a night for athletics. Mr. Nemeczek is going to be here for that particular night, as well as, we're hoping, some coaches and some information. The first half of the evening, the first hour, that presentation starts at 6:30, as does the high school, middle school parent academy, that also starts at 6:30. 6:30 to 7:30, we'll be addressing athletics for the middle school, and 7:30 to 8:30, we'll address athletics for the high school. And many thanks to Ms. Atwell, who has been our parent communicator, who has worked to set up these evenings, and we're very excited for the people that you've put together. We also were in contact today with the people who run Carly's Crusade. That will be another parent evening coming soon. We will be meeting with him this week or next, and we'll be setting up an evening, and an evening for parents, as well as some assemblies for our students, so that's very exciting as well. I also want to recognize Karen Pagano, who had a health and wellness symposium right here in this room last week. She had athletic teachers, health teachers here, assistant superintendents, any nurses, anyone connected to health and wellness from a school base, as well as from the community. And they were talking about new policies that are required by the state in terms of the food that is offered in schools, and so they'll be in different school districts and in our school district as well, a look at health and wellness, new health and wellness requirements in policy. So that's something that we can look forward to as well. And so March is an exciting month for us. Please come, please participate with us in any of these evenings. And I'd like to thank Mr. Mulhern and all, Nicole, and all of the social workers who were here this evening for their presentation.
That's it? Thank you. Do we have any correspondence or more comments to make?
Okay, mine's not that long. Last Thursday was the monthly Dutch County School Board Association meeting. The districts were talking about our budgeting process. Each district spoke a little bit about how they go about the process, as well as districts talked about what their budget's going to look like this year. And of course, we all bemoan the fact that we don't really have the state aid figures, so that makes it a little bit tougher to budget. And at the moment, I would say, most of the districts, the consensus that most people are doing at the moment is what I would call a rollover budget, which is pretty much take last year's budget, everything you were doing last year, continue to do that, which means that fundamentally, no new programs unless there's something else going to be cut instead. And the only, really, the only increases would be those due to contractual obligations. That's what most of the districts were looking at doing, and I think part of that is because, without really knowing what your state aid is, it's hard to plan for increases because you don't know how much you're going to get. That's pretty much it. I'd say the consensus are, the majority of the districts. May I?
Thank you. Christine?
Okay. I had actually one question regarding the parent academy. I understand the 25th agenda is pretty clear, the middle school and the high school for athletics, but for the parent workshops on the 18th, how does a parent who is interested in participating go about signing up? Do you just show up and then you can choose?
Yep, you just show up and you can choose. What we envision is a gathering in, starting in the theater, a welcome, and then an overview of the programs available, and how the evening's going to work, and then people can float around. Some of the other programs that evening will include Castle Learning for the middle and high school parents. It is a 24/7 online computer program that helps students study for Regents and for state assessments. We will also have a presentation on Engage NY, which is a site by New York State, State Ed Department, which, there are plenty of resources there, particularly for some of the new skills that are being sent that parents can access to help their students, first to understand what their students are doing in math and ELA, and then secondly, to help them at home if they would like. And there's a guidance presentation as well. So there's a lot going on, I encourage people to come, and we'll get some information up on the website about the presentations.
Thank you. The other thing I had is a report from the Policy Committee. I would imagine for the next year or so, you'll probably be receiving a report at every meeting. We have a lot of policies to update. So right now, as people know, we have a new policy service. In addition to updating policies, we're also reorganizing and renumbering our policy book. So during the transition, you may have to look a little bit harder on the website to find what it is that you're looking for, but all the policies, both those that we're proposing and those that are already approved, are on the website. Kelly has been really good about making sure they're up there in time for them to be read. So tonight, there are two separate sets of policies on the agenda. One set, we had reviewed last week. This is the second reading of those policies, and the board will be voting to approve those policies tonight. There were 26 that we did at that meeting. There was one notable policy, I just wanted to remind the board, that impacts our agenda and the way our meetings will run a little bit. So we're going to be combining our personnel agenda and our consent agenda into one consent agenda. This will also allow individual board members to request that particular items be polled and not require a motion and a second in order to do that. So moving forward at the next meeting, we'll have to remind ourselves.
May I clarify? When you say polled, you don't mean actually polled from the vote?
Pulled, voted on separately.
Just pulled out of the consent agenda and it made a separate motion. Okay.
The second set of policies are based on our most recent Policy Committee meeting, in which we only reviewed three policies. These were longer policies that had a little more discussion. So the policies were changed most due to federal requirements. Through the Dignity Act, there were some things we needed to update. The policies were the equal opportunity and nondiscrimination policy, this sexual harassment policy, and the student harassment and bullying prevention policy. These policies generally have general information about how to proceed with complaints. They define the group, the different protected groups that are identified in the Dignity Act, so some of these were additions to our policies in particular groups that were not listed prior. There are also some implications moving forward for some other policies we'll look at that are mentioned in these. And there are pieces that go along with these policies called regulations, which the superintendent works out. Once the policies are in place, the superintendent will work out how they'll be implemented in the district. So again, if anyone is interested in looking at these, they are on the school district website, but that first set, board is voting on tonight.
Hudson? Thank you. Do we have any other comments?
I have a question. Am I allowed to speak still or not?
Okay.
So I have to wait, so two weeks?
Yeah.
You're welcome to set up a meeting, a call, or email.
But that's already been done, that's why, that's why I'm here.
I see. I have a motion to approve the personnel agenda.
Motion to approve the personnel agenda, items A through I as attached.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda, items 12.02 through 12.09.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn the meeting?